Like to call the order, the Osage Minerals Council Regular Meeting Wednesday, September fifteenth. Excuse me while I do a little housekeeping. Uh, we are, we're going to make a addition to the agenda under new business. I have a saltwater disposal easement request, Mr. Conklin. We'll get to that. Uh, council, do you have any other efforts that you need looked at?
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, Chairman.
Chairman, Mr. Conklin.
Uh, Councilwoman Gray and Councilwoman Forman.
Um, yes, uh, I'd like to put, uh, National Congress of American Indians attendance.
For November or October?
I'm, I believe it's October, first weekend.
Yes, dear.
Okay.
I'll, I'll put that under at the last category, under new business. Councilwoman Forman.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, just wanted to, uh, check with you to see if you wanted to put the AAPG discussion in executive. Um, for the most part, it's just an update, you know, on what everybody's doing. You know, I think we need to share that, but then there might be some discussion on proprietary stuff. So I'll leave that up to you and in your good hands.
Yes, I would actually like to take care of that in old business and, uh, leave the proprietary information out of it. Uh, I did review the information sent by the, uh, efforts that we had with our breakout session. I concur with what they've said, uh, but I have wondered did the council, have they read it? And do they feel comfortable with it? I think the session will be perfect. Uh, that's all I have on that.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry, I had one more thing. I thought we were going to talk about that in executive, what, uh, Councilwoman Forman was talking about. I do have one thing to add. If we're going to go ahead and make it under new business, when we were ordering all the banners and everything for that conference, um, it appears that I, uh, may have omitted adding, um, the giveaway items and we've got pricing for that. Uh, staff has worked hard on getting some of the things for us to hand out. So, um, we need to approve, um, to pay for that, some of those items.
Yes, uh, thank you. That is exactly what I have on my listing also. I would like to go with the Osage Nation Foundation effort. Uh, Lacy, do we need a resolution to take care of that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Councilwoman, I want that under new business and we'll close out with that. I do have, uh, the update in executive will be between just us council. And if you would like to go in a couple of items, I would discuss in the AAPG effort. So with that being said, I'd like to have, uh, Second Chair Red Eagle give us an opening prayer and reading of our deceased, please.
Shangalawatika, Zani. Thank you, Chairman. I thought it was Wakanda, Wakandajinkie. I would take on me, Mark Bay, Ma, 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 Bay, uh, Ma, Bay name. They can tell how that Wakanda, Wakandajinkie, they can tell how Wakanda, who keeps the money that was, I see, this up as a mineral council. Yeah, yeah, that Wakanda, Wakandajinkie, Ma, Gadi, uh, La, they, they, Wakanda, Mineral Council. Thank you, Father, for this beautiful day. Thank you for the seasons you granted, that you bestowed, bestowed upon us for our use and for our survival, Father. Thank you for all your great blessings, Father, that you bestowed upon our people. Father, from way back there in the, oh, see the goats, see there was, I see, way back there when our, our, our forefathers ran, ran the tribe, Father, and all the, all the clans and all the bands that we had, Father.
Yeah.
All the bands we had, Yellow Horse, Dinka, all the others, Father, and Beaver Band, Father. All those are represented, Father, and all the leaders of those bands, Father. Thank you for all your grace, Father. Bless this meeting and bless all those that are in attendance, Father. Bless our people, Father, bless our, our children, Father. Bless all of those that are bereaved, just our father, Shaw family, Red Corn family, Father. I bless you too.
Yeah.
And give us strength to lead us and guide us in the future, Father, for the sake of our people, Father. I sure hope it was. Yeah, God, Shana, Wakandajinkie, amen.
Amen.
Uh, deceased Osages, uh, August twenty, twenty twenty-one. Henry Robert Taylor, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, Wichita, Kansas. Gerald Anthony James, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Donald Keith Fuller, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, Arlington, Virginia. Cheryl Lynn Frye, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, Bill Gardens, California. Marion Catherine Beckwith, August twelfth, twenty twenty-one, Wichita, Kansas. William A. Feigen, July nine, twenty twenty-one, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. John Blase Cunningham, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, San, San Juan, Capistrano. Stephen C. Wilson, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, San Bernardino, California. Charles A. Ripido, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, Clamore, Oklahoma. Dr. Robin Shaw and Frank Red Corn, may they rest in peace. Uh, Wakanda, Wakandajinkie, Wakanda, peace, you there. That's all.
Take a moment for these men. So many of us, this week has been. Numbers are incredible. With that, our heart and prayers go out to all of our families. It's, it's our families now that's included in this day we live. Thank you, brother, for praying for us. I also want to say that I was taught to always remember your elders. And that prayer, I want you to know that, that takes care of us in ways we don't know. With the announcing them in our prayer, they say, you humble yourself. Lord hears that. And I couldn't ask for a better prayer this morning. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Forman?
Present.
Councilwoman Gray? Councilwoman Harland?
She will be right with us. Continue, please.
Councilman Red Corn?
David.
Second Chair Red Eagle? Councilman Rebar?
President.
Chairman Waller?
Present.
Yabakor?
I'd like to ask for superintendent's report at this time, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, Superintendent.
Thank you so much. Um, the superintendent's report, we have fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-two less three thousand two hundred and thirty producing wells. The three thousand, the three thousand two hundred and thirty are saltwater disposal wells. We, um, reported, subsurfaces reporting four workover permits, three plugging permits, one emergency plugging permit, and one emergency workover permit. They reported two new drilling completions. BGI, BGI, uh, Resources completed well number twelve in the southwest quarter of twenty-one, twenty-eight, seven. And, uh, well number four in the northeast quarter of twenty, twenty-eight, seven.
Very good.
And that's pretty, that pretty much concludes my report. Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Forman.
Uh, thank you, and, uh, these are all, uh, it's partly discussion, partly questions, um, regarding the superintendent's report that was sent to us. Um, uh, first of all, um, regarding the last lease sale. I understand there was an announcement, uh, made by the superintendent, and I heard this third hand. So it's not been announced in our meeting, so I just want to confirm it. Uh, that the superintendent said that we will start having two lease sales per year. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, that was based on, um, a conversation with, with the chairman. You, the OMC had passed a resolution four dash four three oh, asking for quarterly lease sales. And I believe I had talked to the OMC before stating that, you know, quarterly lease sales may not be something that the agency is going to be able to do. So during the OM, during the lease sale, I did make a comment that we, the Osage Agency, would be working with the Osage Minerals Council in having more sales, lease sales. And I did, I am, I, I know that I mentioned at least two a year.
Okay, good. Um, do you, can you tell us when, a ballpark idea of the next lease sale?
Well, I did ask my, uh, lease, my, um, realty specialist, and I asked her, how long does it basically take? And she said that she, to allow ninety to a hundred and twenty days for a nomination period, and then another six weeks. She recommended that, um, the next lease sale for the OMC and the Osage Agency be held in March and then September of twenty twenty-two. So with that being said, I will need to have an OMC resolution, like we did the last time, identifying that, you know, those dates, what dates you would like to have the lease sale. And if you want to go ahead and consider sometime in March and September for both, um, in both, for one, um, resolution, that would be fine.
Okay, well, and I still, um, would like to keep this platform because I have a couple of other things I want to talk about, but I'm sure our chairman will, uh, arrange for that, and I appreciate that information. Uh, I would like to suggest, though, that for these, for the next lease sale, and, and I like this, uh, time period, I think that's appropriate. But I would like to suggest that, uh, the BIA communicate closely with chairman and the minerals council in planning these lease sales, uh, and organizing them, scheduling them, uh, advertising them, and reaching out to as many people as possible. I think we can really improve on our lease sales if, if we collaborate together, cooperate together, and work together on planning these. So that's just a suggestion on my part. I'm sure that the, uh, council would not disagree with that. Um, uh, let's see. Uh, I would like to, um, I would like to point out on the, um, end of the month financial report. Uh, I was doing a, a little calculating last night, and, uh, for the month of, uh, August, and I am maybe wrong on this because I think there's multiple different production months on this, uh, report that is for August. Let's see, let me go to the top of this. Yes, for July production, but I noticed there's a column identifying multiple months, June, July, uh, I think it wanted to mean since August. But at any rate, I noticed that on oil production, there's three hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and forty-four barrels. We get a monthly report, uh, from Perdure on what their CO2, uh, production is and, uh, their water flood production. So I, I took that out of that total amount to come up with our daily oil production outside of the North Burbank of around, uh, uh, just under seven thousand barrels a day. And I'm just wondering if it would be possible to, uh, start reporting, you know, all the rest, you know, the rest of the, uh, mineral estate, uh, production, um, separated out from the North Burbank, so we can see how we're doing on our, you know, increasing production, drilling wells, uh, work, working over wells and that sort of thing. Uh, is that possible?
Um, I would recommend that the chairman put that in writing, and let's see what we can do for you.
Okay.
Also, I would like to go back to your comment that you made earlier. Uh, the OMC, the Osage Agency, uh, works with the OMC in identifying a specific date for the, um, oil and gas lease sales. So without a resolution and that date being provided, the agency, you know, we're, we're just waiting for some guidance from you all. So you do, the OMC does pick out the date.
Okay, thank you.
I would be, I'd like the floor for just a second. I'd like to tendibly set those dates for the third Wednesday of the month of March and also in September of next year. Because we have to have a meeting after the sale at those times.
I would second that, if that's the, in the form of a motion.
We're just as a discussion.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you.
I agree with it.
Thank you, counsel. With that, I'd like to, uh, ask superintendents or any other items she needs to report on, please.
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
There's a couple of us.
Yes, Councilwoman of ours.
Well, Red Corn, Councilman Red Corn had his hand up there, but I guess he's taking it down. Uh, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I'd like to know, uh, if you could please read off the, uh, results of the August ninth lease sale, because we've never got to see those yet. Who bought what tracks at, for what amount of money?
You bet. Uh, track number one was the northeast quarter of seven thirty, twenty-one north, nine east. That was awarded for forty-eight hundred dollars to PE, Osage. Track number twenty, um, was the northeast quarter of section five, twenty-three, twelve. And that went for forty-seven hundred dollars to Grand Resources. Twenty-one was the northwest quarter of section five, twenty-three, twelve, went to Grand Resources for forty-seven hundred. Track number twenty-two was the northeast quarter of section six, township twenty-three north, range twelve east, forty-seven hundred dollars, went to Grand Resources. Track number twenty-three was the northeast quarter of section twenty, pardon me, section thirty-one, township twenty-four north, range twelve east, went to Grand Resources. Track number twenty, did I say twenty-four, just saying, I apologize, I missed twenty-three.
You said twenty-three, the last one.
Thank you so much. Uh, track number twenty-four, northwest quarter of section thirty-one, twenty-four, twelve, Grand Resources for forty-seven hundred dollars. Track number twenty-five, southeast quarter of section thirty-one, township twenty-four north, range twelve east, for forty-seven hundred dollars, went to Grand Resources. Track number twenty-six, southwest quarter of section thirty-one, twenty-four north, twelve east, went to Grand Resources at forty-seven hundred. Track number twenty-seven, northwest quarter, section thirty-two, twenty-four north, twelve east, went to Grand Resources at forty-seven hundred. Track number twenty-eight, southwest quarter of section thirty-two, twenty-four north, twelve east, went to Grand Resources at forty-seven hundred. Track number forty, actually, forty-one, southeast quarter of nineteen twenty-nine, went to EEO Sage for forty-eight hundred. Track number one, under all tracks, less coalbed methane, southwest quarter of section thirty-two, twenty-one north, twelve east, the thirty-six hundred went to, uh, solid relief oil.
Okay, thank you, uh, superintendent. A couple, uh, questions, uh, about the lease sale. I noticed on the bulletin that not everybody got, uh, there was a sentence that said that the, uh, was assumed all liability or responsibility of any unplugged wellbores found, uh, on the lease during the term of the lease. The, uh, uh, I know that some of these tracks had, uh, over a hundred wells, existing wellbores on them, that were on our well, uh, plugging list, uh, considered orphaned or abandoned wells. So my question is, uh, are these wells to be taken off the orphaned well and abandoned list? Do you not consider them orphaned wells and abandoned anymore?
I do not, but they are on, if they are on the list.
Pardon? Pardon?
I do not know if they are on.
Well, I know a hundred and eight wells that you, that we sold, uh, are on the wellplugging list. We were working, we were currently plugging nineteen of those at the time of the lease sale, that you're aware of, because I want to make sure everybody knew about it. I was just curious to know, if you could tell us the status. I know that Candy Thomas, who is helping us with, uh, manage the, our plugging funds that we received from the United States Congress, um, you know, was also interested to know what the, what your position was on it, whether or not you consider those.
I, this is Richard Oneal, can I respond to that?
Deputy Superintendent, uh, Councilman Rebar, I'd like to have that superintendent's response.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, the, the orphaned wells is already on the list. The government's already paid out money to have those wells plugged, so they were not the, for presently, see if he took out a new lease, he would not be responsible for those, those wells.
Oh, okay, so, uh, the, well, just a matter of clarification, it's my understanding, having been a former, former chairman of the wellplating committee, that the, the funds we received from the United States government, from the Congress, uh, was the amount of three million dollars, and that would not plug all these wells. So we don't have to maybe plug all these wells, is what I'm saying. So we can plug a few of the wells, maybe, with that three million, but we can't plug a hundred and eight wells.
Yeah, I believe you need to fall back and probably request more money, like you did before, previously.
Well, that doesn't mean we're going to get it, you know, we could, you know, ask, we have, we've had, we have actually requested for some additional funds. Uh, we don't know if we're going to get it yet or not. We certainly have not received it yet. But the, I guess really, it's, I'd like to know, eh, you know, what the status is of those hundred and eight wells. Whose wells are they? Uh, are they orphaned and abandoned? Because they are on our orphaned and abandoned list. Or are they now belong to and owned by Grand Resources, uh, and they're all their responsibility to, uh, to produce them or plug them? And what do we, what do we do about the nineteen we already started plugging? Do you want us to stop plugging them? Or do you want us to continue plugging? And if, if you want us to plug them, uh, what if Grand Resources wants to produce them? So those are all kind of issues that I brought up before the lease sale. I was really concerned about, and I still am, I don't know the answers to those questions. So anyway, that's all I had, Chairman. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I, I need to make one response. Also, in this, uh, criteria is the emergency plugging. It's where their status is in that level also, as, uh, directed by the council and our project, along with Mrs. Thomas.
Chairman.
Deputy Superintendent.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Robin.
Yes, Superintendent.
Thank you.
I wanted to just say that, um, whatever concerns Councilwoman, uh, Rebar has, then I would recommend that a letter be prepared for your signature and sent over to the Osage Agency for a response.
Chair, Chairman?
Councilman Red Corn.
We already have a letter from Robyn Phillips stating that when Leslie takes on those leases, all the wellbores go with it. That's an official letter submitted by the superintendent. So in my view, that protects the shareholders against having liabilities based on, you know, questions that are raised by people. That's, that's fine, I, I, I get it. But I think before we start, and, and I, I sent an email to you, request, and we respond, and I didn't see a response. I don't know, Chairman, who you're listening to, but we have an official statement from the BI, Bureau of Indian Affairs on their, on their, uh, stance on these wellbores. Is that correct, Ms. Phillips? She sent us a letter in response to Candy Thomas?
Well, I have to say that it wasn't a letter, it was a question, and it was an email that I responded to. And she asked about, um, the notice that it basically says, be advised, let's be acceptable responsibility of any wellbores found on the property during the term of the lease. And I said, that is correct.
That, then I think, is that an official statement? I'm going to treat it as an official response from the United States government. The second thing I think it does is it protects our shareholders from liabilities to, to these wellbores. If you take, and that's, that's not our decision. Once we make a decision to have an auction, we sold those leases, just like you said, Chairman. I mean, these are my feelings. I mean, we can, uh, you have questions, I'm not going to hold anybody back to having questions, but we really need to weigh in that the response we got from Ms. Phillips is solid, and that's the way they're practicing this now. We have concerns about that, yeah, I, I guess we, let's vote on, vote on sending a letter or not. I got a feeling maybe the majority of the mineral council may be comfortable with what her, her response is. But, you know, I, and that's my two cents, as a one in eight response. But I'm treating that letter or that response from Robyn Phillips as, we need to move on.
Do you totally understand how it's no matter?
You can't.
Counsel.
What's that? I didn't hear. I didn't hear the statement.
He said something about, um, it wasn't on letterhead, so it wasn't official response.
Okay, well.
That's what he said.
Oh, okay, so it's an email, so that's my feeling, is we got a response from Mrs. Phillips, we need to move on.
Yes, sir. I wanted to bring this all in front of the council before said letter is directed. Uh, we will have that request in writing for the Chairman.
My request was that you acknowledge that that, her statement is correct, and that's how we as a mineral council believe. Now.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm confused, you're saying you're going to write a letter, you're going to question what she's saying, or are we going to back up what she's saying? Because my feeling is we protect the shareholders if we allow the BIA to sign those wellbores till Leslie. Now, I know that's not popular among our producers and operators, yeah, but we're not here to protect them, we got to protect the shareholders from liabilities of wellbore. And that's a, that's a big, it can be a big thing, we know that, we see that. All through the orphan well program, we developed that guide where we did not have liability for the shareholders to plug wells. So all these arguments, we've already made them, we've already discussed those, we've had our attorneys look at those, we even talked to the higher-ups, the solicitors, and they came back and said that the tort claims are solid behind the orphan well program, so we can continue to plug wells and the liabilities are on the federal government. And I don't understand why we want to continue to question those premises when we've already settled those. But I, like I said, I, I'm not going to hold somebody back as a mineral council person. If they have questions, I'm okay. But I want the BIA to know, and I'd like, uh, uh, the mineral council to know that the majority of the vote rules. If there's two or fi, or three that are unhappy, that's fine. But the majority rules, and the way I feel, the majority of mineral council approves that, that auction. And the majority of the council, and I'd have, we, we need to make a vote. Do we approve what Robyn Phillips says, or do we want to question it further and further and further, and kind of reverse back what we've established on the orphan well program through our attorneys, that the liabilities are on the federal government because they managed it to begin with? This is a touchy question. I don't know why we want to continue kicking that can down the road. Because we, this is the way life's going to be on the reservation, because these wells weren't getting plugged. They're not. So we come up with a plan to plug, and we're standing by our guys in there, and they're out there right now, plugging wells or assessing those. Candy is fine with the way they're doing their business. So I, I'm not sure, the, the reasons, I don't agree with them, but I'm not going to say, I'm, I want to stop the conversation, let's keep it going. But let's make a solid decision as mineral council and move on. Thank you.
Chairman?
I just have one comment to make. The actual response has already been made. When the council voted to accept this lease sale and all that encompassing of our federal trustee, that's a done deal. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Chairman?
Uh, counsel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes, thank you. Um, Superintendent, um, I know that we had made that, in fact, I'm the one who made the resolution that we have for lease sales a year. And the reason I said that is because since OMC four has been, since two thousand eighteen, we've only had. we've only had three lease sales. Three, that's it. So I think there's been plenty of time for you all to prepare to get these, whether it's ninety to a hundred and twenty days. And I'm Chairman, I'm willing to amend that as you recommended uh those dates. So we will have those council meetings uh after the lease sale. Um, but my my urging has been that um this is one of our jobs that we need to take care of, and it's one of your jobs to prepare. So working hand in hand, we hope that you'll be able to, we set these dates, then you have, then you're on notice, we'll get it over there, and then you can already be preparing for that March date now. So that should give you plenty of time. Um, it's very uh uh difficult to continue to answer shareholders' questions. You know, we used to get bonuses, we used to get this, and we understand it's in a uh that we've been through a pandemic, but you can only use that for an excuse for so long. And it comes down to um hold our trustee accountable for what they're supposed to be doing. So I just wanted to make that comment. Um, totally, totally, we'll get whatever paperwork you need to uh begin the one for March, and then we'll prepare for the one in March for September. Um, the other, pardon me?
I said that'd be perfect, I do need a resolution, so that's.
You will, okay, great.
That's a motion, dear.
Well, okay, uh, I make the motion that we have, we change resolution. And Lacy, if you can give me that number? The resolution that was made concerning the uh four lease sales to two lease sales that will be in March and September to coincide with March and September's council dates for lease sales.
Thank you, because that allows both dates, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Discussion, counsel.
I think uh.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Redcorn, please.
Uh, thank you, I I actually had my hand up before this motion. So after we finish this motion, I still have a few comments regarding the previous discussion.
Yeah, and I still have the second part to my question, this is just this motion. And then I wanna finish up with my questions to Superintendent. Any other?
Call for the question.
Oh, I've got it.
Uh, Councilman Redcorn, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I'm kind of confused, why are we limiting our ability to sell oil and gas leases? By going from four to two, I'd like to have even more. I I don't understand, why are we, why do we wanna sit around and discuss an oil and gas lease sale?
May, may I respond to that?
I I.
Let him finish there.
I just feel like, you know, we could sit here and argue for a year and never have one sale. Uh, then when I heard the comments on let's uh let's let's uh delay the lease sale, and we gotta sell some oil, that's our business. We gotta sell these leases, that's in the constitution. The mineral council, well, there's two duties. Approve leases and look for other forms of development. If we delay lease sales, we're not doing our duty. We could be sitting in front of the A G's office, why are you guys limiting your ability to sell oil and gas leases? We need to have more leases. I'm gonna vote no on this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, I do have one comment for Miss, Councilwoman Foreman. We did announce at that sale that if if the nominations are there, we will be coming back to the council and making that available option to have a lease sale that we could have the timing in. So there is one option of that, Councilwoman Foreman.
Well, uh, uh, Chair, I, there got a motion on the floor, and I'd like to have that voted on, and I still have the floor afterwards, then Councilwoman Foreman can have it. I still have a question for uh council, I mean for Superintendent.
On this motion.
Call for a question.
Call for a question.
I have, I'd still like to, I'd like to have something to say about this in the discussion of this function.
Yes, sir, Councilman Rebar.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I agree with Councilman Redcorn. I don't like somebody dictating to us when and where we can have a resale. Uh, this is our mineral state, we're responsible to headright owners. If we wanna have a resale, whether we negotiate it or do it in a public auction, whatever form, format we want, that's our responsibility uh to do that. And I agree a hundred percent. Uh, I thought having four year may be pushing it, especially since we hadn't had any uh in a long time. But I'm all in favor of having lease sales when we're prepared to do it with the reasonable, responsible amount of time and and effort going towards it. Uh, uh, we have asked to have one one hundred and eighty days from now having to do with that uh other property that we've talked about uh the last time we got together. Uh, but uh, which would fall about March if if it's accepted. But uh, I I agree with Councilman Redcorn. I don't wanna have somebody dictate to me how, you know, a certain amount of lease sales we can have. I think maybe we set one for the next one that we wanna have. So he just goes on a shoot from the hip, we just do it as they come along. And if somebody wants to buy a lease in the meantime, it is to our best interest to sell them a lease. By golly, by golly, the door's open, let's talk. But but I I don't like having the superintendent's office tell us when and where we can have a lease sale. I think that's our responsibility. We don't have a lot of responsibility, but our main responsibility, of course, is to always to the headright owners. It is, is to, is to protect their headright. And developing this mineral state for the benefit uh is what we're here to do. And I think I don't wanna give that responsibility away. Especially to somebody that really doesn't have a uh skin in the game, so to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel. Call for the question, please.
Chairman.
Uh, excuse me. For.
I would like to say something in this discussion, just briefly. We we also have to let reason prevail. We have to have a a great amount of time to not only pick out what leases are, you know, we would like to sell. I know there's nominations out there, but we need to, you know, we've got thousands of acres that are just out there fallow and not leased, and nothing's being done on it. So we have to have the time to pick leases, we have to have the time to allow uh anyone that wants to make a bid to do their due diligence. That's not, you know, this last lease sale, they had four days. So um, you know, we have to be practical about this as well. You know, we can puff our chests out and get all worked up about um, you know, um, doing our own thing. But we have to be reasonable too, and we have to have, at the very least, a hundred and sixty-two days is what I calculated with what the uh superintendent just told us, ninety to twenty days for nominations. And six weeks, you know, after that, that's a hundred and sixty-two days. So I don't know if that gets us to March, I'm gonna guess it does, but uh, you know, that's um, that's my take on this. Uh, we have to be reasonable, we have to be business minded. We have to work with the people that want to lease our properties so they can, uh, so they, I mean, they're not gonna, you know, we're running off operators right now. And to be uh, you know, to just kind of push our weight around does not make for good business relationships or people that wanna come in and lease our our properties. So the way to protect our shareholders and get production up is to have good business practices on how we conduct these things. So that's my two cents.
Chairman, if I could wrap this up, please.
Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, when we made this announcement or this resolution several months ago, well, probably about three months ago, because we had a lease sale. And um, uh, everyone was, um, I remember that one of the council members who's just made some comments was holding up a piece of paper and shaking it at a O S A meeting saying, saying that this was an illegal lease sale, this wasn't done right, this was, you know, and all opposition, and said that we need more time. And so now I make a motion to give more time. And if um, and if we wanna go back in and change it or keep it at four times a year, I wanna hold our trustee accountable for us having lease sales. This is the first time I've ever heard of a hundred uh twenty days or a hundred and eighty days plus six weeks. Seriously, seriously, Superintendent. We, this is the one thing that that we should be working hand in hand together on making sure that lease sales are done. This is a responsibility on you, and it's a responsibility on us as well that we get the nominations out there. This is the one thing, and it hasn't, we've only had three. I would be embarrassed, I'm embarrassed, that's why I wanted to put it out there, and counsel.
Four years, we've had.
Four years, we've had three.
Chairman.
Thank you, counsel.
Chairman, this is Robin Phillips. And may I, may I explain the amount of time that the Bureau of Indian Affairs has to put in to a lease sale? Once we get the res- thank you. Once we get the resolution from the O M C, then at that point, we have to go in and prepare a notice and publish that notice and allow lessies or prospective bidders an opportunity to submit um.
Nomination.
Thank you so much. To make nominations. And at that point, the agency brings those in, and then we have to review the nominated tracks to ensure that those nominated tracks are available. And if they are available, then we have to prepare what is called a lease sale bulletin. And then at that point, that lease sale bulletin is sent out to the lessi- to the prospective bidders, it's posted. So there is an amount of time, and when I mentioned the time earlier, Tammy Kennedy had told me that it can be ninety to a hundred and twenty day nomination period, and then she would need an additional six weeks to get everything checked out and posted before the sale. So I I wanna make it clear that it's not a hundred and eighty-two days. I mean, it it takes some time there. And that's why the agency during the lease sale, I had spoke with the chairman and said, you know, let's see if we can start having two a year and then see how productive or successful we are in getting that done. And then, sure, if you wanna have more, that's, that is what we have. The agency, that is our trust responsibility in working with you and doing something like that. But like Councilwoman Foreman said, we have to allow ample time to to the agency in order to do what they need to do and allow individual cut, individual prospective lessies an opportunity to make a nomination, to submit their nomination. So I'm, 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 I know that the O S A J Agency is wanting to work with the O S A J Minerals Council in having more lease sales. So I earlier just threw out March of twenty twenty-two and September of twenty twenty-two because that would give the agency ample time to start getting our notices out. But it is up to the O S A J Minerals Council, I'm, we're just trying to do the best we can.
Superintendent, have you always been allowed this amount of time uh to prior to O M C one, two, and three? And also when the tribal council was, is this, was this the standard? Because I've had former uh council members from the tri- old tribal, O S A J tribal council days, and also previous um uh minerals council, they are saying that um they would have uh more lease sales than what we've been doing. How come we're not doing it? So this is what stirred this whole conversation. But I'm willing to go through with getting this, um, it it seems like the main focus of why the oh, uh, the BIA is right next door to us is to help promote this mineral state. And now, you know, uh, when you're saying two times a year, it almost should be, I I did like to do it quarterly because we would do the, we could do that uh uh, you'd be on notice when those uh notices or the resolution comes out. And then you ought to know in the next three months after that, or four months, you should be preparing for the one every, every hundred and eighty days. And so we could get four into a year, why couldn't we do that? So I do, once we vote on this, I do, Chairman, have one more response to the uh wellbores, and I would like to finish that, so I'm, I'm done talking this.
Chairman, call for a question.
Call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman? Councilman Redcorn?
No.
Second Chair Redigl?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar? Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes, um.
Chairman, can I?
I just have a response to the uh on the um the the email. Uh, Superintendent, when you write us an email or whether you put it on a letterhead, is that not your response on behalf as our trustee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Redcorn.
Yeah, I also still.
Thank you, um, to answer Mrs. Gray's question, previous to Mrs. Phillips getting here, I was pushing for a lease sale every other month. And I don't, I can't remember if I wanted or not, but we eventually somewhere got to a quarter, which I didn't think was enough. So to answer your question, prior to Mrs. Phillips getting here, previous superintendent, we were, and we think we averaged a hundred and twenty-nine dollars an acre at that.
Wow.
So, I mean, but I'm, I'm saying this is a different time.
Thank you.
I understand, I understand the concerns, the questions. I'm, I'm just trying to be fair to the people that are new on the committee. Um, we're looking at twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-two dollars an acre now, fully six, eight times lower than what we were getting at that time. The government's regulations on September of two thousand fourteen, we've heard it from a lot of producers, that put them out of the business. The overregulation, the E A stuff, the E I S, we've gone, we've gone a lot of battleground. But when the barrels were dollar six, uh sixty-five dollars a barrel in two thousand six and seven, uh, we couldn't keep up with all the leases that were presented for and actually auctions, we had, we had, and then the negotiations were going. I mean, that's the whole, our whole day, our whole meeting was dealing with trying to approve leases. September fourth, two thousand fourteen, that all changed. And uh, we fought some battles. Now, they wanna say, well, we did a, we did a lease sale, and by golly, I just don't like the results. Well, I get it, I I, but it tells me two things. This last lease sale tells me we, even though oil's shooting up, those regulations are from the federal government is keeping producers out of our doorway. That's what it tells me, I know it tells the rest of y'all, but it tells me that the second thing is, is we passed a resolution to set aside eleven of those leases for ourselves. The government took those leases and auctioned them away. So that tells me on the mineral council, we gotta battle the fight if we want to operate those leases ourselves. There's work to be done there because in my understanding, you know, we got some, maybe the Wind River folks up there, they don't have an O six act that they have to negotiate around if they wanna do the operations themselves. So that's why I like lease sales. It's not like I'm, you know, want my own way or, it tells me a lot of information. And then I see a lease sale and then the responses. I do know, I mean, we take punches, we take hits, but that's the mineral council. People say, well, you didn't sell as much, and it's your fault. Well, there, there's learnings to be had, but the thing we shouldn't do is delay. I think we ought to push for the next lease sale. Somebody walks in the door with a negotiation, let's get it moving and get it approved if it's a good, fair deal to these shareholders. So my feeling is we gotta keep that door open, and we gotta work hard to reduce those regulations because when the feds have that pen in their hand, production goes down. I'm sorry, but that's the way I see it. And I think if the tribe had more say in what was going on, the O S A J's ourselves, and that's why I voted to approve eleven leases to set them aside so we can operate them, but the BIA grabbed those leases and auctioned them all away. but the BIA grabbed those leases and auctioned them all away. Am I upset, mad about it? No, because I learned something. Yeah, I didn't get my way, you know, but that's the way this Mineral Council operates. So, the thing we need to take is, we got work to do if we want to operate these things ourselves. We did produce another resolution to ship that over to, uh, St. John Skinner. Well, there's, that's a different legal situation that might plant and work better. I don't know, we got to explore it. But the ultimate goal is more barrels for our shareholders. We've got to fight for more barrels. And that's why I like the plan on enhanced recovery, because as Susan Foreman said, I'd like, she's going to get a report, I guess, you take those EOR CO2 barrels away, and what do we got? Not much. We got to fight to get those barrels up. And then maybe, you know, that's our big prize out there. We got to push for that kind of development in this camp. That's another thing I'm taking away from this, uh, auction. So, you know, the old way of doing business, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's just not producing even when oil is the same price as it was in two thousand and six, seven, and eight. And it just shot up to a hundred dollars a barrel, so we were selling leases like crazy. Same price, seventy dollars a barrel, and not, not a lot of, that's saying something to me. We've got work to do, so, anyway, just a different twist on my take on what I learned through that last auction. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, could I finish now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Chairman. Um, I hear what Councilmember Rebar's saying. I would only add that part of improving how we sell our leases is to evaluate the lease sales we've already had and see where we can improve, improve on them. We've done a fairly good job of that today. I think we still need to talk more about the timing and, and the advertising and all the things that failed on the last, uh, lease sale, because there's multiple reasons why we put forty leases out there and only nine of them sold. You know, there's, you know, it's not just the price, it's the timing, it's the notice, it's the advertising, it's multiple things. And that's why we need the extra time to plan properly for these lease sales. Um, now, moving on, and I'm going to say, let's take the lease sale item off of the agenda now that we've talked about it, but I wanted to say a few things about the wellbores, the orphaned wells. Um, I, I've heard everything that everybody said, but we are actually getting mixed messages from the BIA. Yes, on the lease bulletin, it did say that all successful bidders would be responsible for, uh, any orphaned wells found on the lease, and that's a little vague. I guess if you don't find them, you're not responsible for them. But, um, that lease bulletin was only posted on the BIA website. The people, and, and not even all of the Osage Producers Association, uh, members got the notice of a lease sale, which by the way, and I want to remind everybody, came four days before nominations were due. So, there wasn't time for anybody to do anything. But, uh, we just heard our assistant superintendent, Mr. Winlock, tell us that, um, if the, the, um, orphaned wells, a successful bidder, because, he said that because the BIA has already taken the money for those orphaned wells, that any successful bidder is not responsible for the orphaned wells on the lease. So, we've got this email from the superintendent, and today we have a statement from the, uh, assistant superintendent, it says they're not responsible. So, this is a, it's a complicated issue, and it needs to be ferreted out, we need to understand completely, um, who's responsible for these. And yes, I realize we have an email from the superintendent, but I think it's an unsettled issue over at the BIA, and we still need to have clarification because we are getting mixed messages. And I might add that, um, if there's even two or three, uh, orphaned wells on a successful bidder's tract, and they don't know about it because they didn't see this lease bulletin posted on the website, then that absolutely increases the cost in their economics and could kill any project to drill a well. And, uh, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the BIA is responsible, not the, or, not the shareholders, but the BIA is responsible for unplugged wells. We have a hundred years of looking the other way and not getting these wells plugged. So, that's another issue. But, uh, we have to take into consideration all of the things regarding this issue that might prohibit us from getting any successful bidders and, and therefore not getting any new production. So, there's multiple ways to look at this, not just one. So, that's all I have to say.
In closing remarks, before we move on, as a former tribal council, you had producers coming in and nominating enough leases, it triggered your lease sale. We even went down at six dollars a barrel of oil, still sold leases, still operated, was in good times, I assure you. But, the other consideration is, yes, I do agree, the effort from fourteen on has been a slugfest for us and our producers, they're not wanting to come here, they are what drives our lease sales. We can say anything we want, but they've got to write the checks to come in and produce these leases. I just feel like this is the best way to approach it. I'd really like to move on down and get to our audit report.
Chairman, um, I have one more question for the superintendent. I'll be honest with you, she hasn't been on here, you know, for a while that I've, I've been able to, uh, discuss this, but, um, I know that she brought, uh, Kami Kennedy, um, as, as a, you know, the person who is in charge of that. I would hope that we could work more hand in hand with her, because I know superintendent probably has other business to, to handle at the BIA. And when she mentioned Kami, I had heard from other, like, former council members and, uh, minerals councilors, that Kami is quite experienced in, um, knowing what is available and, uh, and that, that, that may be the key to, if we can start removing barriers to, how come it takes so long? Because she was going step by step by step of how long it takes, but when she said Kami, I, I, that triggered a memory that, um, this was probably someone that we could work with, um, and, uh, you know, and our staff can work with, with our geologists and such. That way, it shortens the stick instead of us trying to fight with this great big stick. If we can shorten it, we'll have more impact. And the impact is what we want. So, I, I hopefully, Chairman, you and I and, uh, council can have a, a more comprehensive conversation of how we can reduce those days of, um, of taking so long to have a, a lease sale, like Councilmember, uh, Redcorn had said, that they were doing it every other month and, and quarterly, so.
For really good times.
Yeah. So, we want good times again. Thank you.
Thank you all, that was great. Uh, I'd like to have our audit report, please.
Okay, um, this is Anna, I'm going to read it for Lacy, she had to read.
I, uh, I approve that, please, Anna, go right ahead, best you can.
Okay, if you have any questions, please email Lacy, because I'm, I'm not sure of any answers, um.
I'll, I'll field the questions, I read it.
Thank you. Osage oil and gas calculated receipts versus actual July twenty twenty-one production, August twenty twenty-one collection. Um, gross barrels for July twenty twenty was three hundred and seven thousand six fifty-one, July twenty twenty-one was three hundred and forty-three five forty-four thousand. Royalty barrels was forty-six thousand three seventy-eight in July twenty twenty, and fifty thousand eight hundred and forty-eight in July twenty twenty-one. Gross barrels versus royalty barrels was fifteen point oh seven percent in July twenty twenty, and fourteen point eighty percent in July twenty twenty-one. Daily barrels produced was nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-four point twenty-one in July twenty twenty, and eleven thousand eighty-two oh eight in July twenty twenty-one. Average price per barrel in July twenty twenty was thirty-eight seventy-six, July twenty twenty-one is sixty-four twenty-four. Uh, for collections, the total oil royalty in July twenty twenty was one million eight hundred and eleven thousand nine nineteen, and August twenty twenty-one was three million six sixty-one fifty. Total gas royalty was fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty, and August twenty twenty-one was one eighteen thousand two seventy-nine. Tank bottom royalty was three hundred and twenty-seven dollars of July twenty twenty, and in August twenty twenty-one, it was seven hundred and eighty-seven. Total oil and gas royalty was one million eight hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-five in July twenty twenty, and in August twenty twenty-one is three million seven hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and sixteen. The actual receipts are the same for July twenty twenty, and it's the same for August. So, uh, calculated versus actual was the same.
Very good. Council, do you have any questions?
I have, I, I have a thought.
Yes.
I would like to, uh, share this, uh, this information with our shareholders and our newsletters. I don't, you know, I mean, we're, we're announcing it publicly, I think it'd be good to document it in our newsletters.
I'd advise that it be put on our website after our counselors heard it.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good enough for me.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to move on down to new business. Item A will now be a motion for a request for a saltwater disposal. Ann, could you read in the legal description for Mr. Conklin's, uh, request?
Uh, I, I do not have it. I think it's in Lacy's email. Can we unmute Mr. Conklin, please?
It is on our board booket.
Okay.
You, I don't have it in front of me. My apologies.
Mr. Conklin's on the phone, Chairman.
Mr. Conklin, could you please, uh, request, uh, the legal and, uh, request for the disposal,
Can you unmute?
Mr. Conklin?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, I can, Roger.
Okay, good morning. Uh, I'm requesting a saltwater disposal easement, and the legal is the Alcott, A-L-C-O-T, seven dash two, southeast quarter of sec- uh, uh, section seven twenty-two oh eight.
Yes, sir. Council, do you have any discussion? I would entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
So moved, I'll second that, I have a second. I have a motion on the floor by Second Chair Red Eagle, seconded by Councilwoman Foreman. Any other discussion? I'd like to call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Conklin, uh, we'll have that out to you, and, uh, thank you for assisting us on the legal, please.
And thank all of you. It's a pleasure, pleasure working with you.
So is a pleasure. Stay safe, and thank you.
Thank you. Bye now.
Bye-bye. I did see, uh, the next under lease sale discussion, uh, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, strike that. We have the next discussion over the OMC regulations, Councilwoman Foreman.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman. Um, I would, uh, I'm going to make a motion to table this because I was waiting on some critical information, uh, on a timely matter, and it didn't, it didn't come in a timely matter. So, I would like to table this and put it on the next agenda.
Thank you, I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the question to table.
Councilwoman Redcorn, who, who made the motion, second? Foreman and Waller, okay.
Uh, yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I make the motion to go into executive session.
Need a second, please.
Second.
Second, I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Gray, seconded by Second Chair Red Eagle. I'd like to go into executive session and take a five-minute break. We will have a legal update and also some criteria information, uh, uh, presentation for our, uh, AAPG summit.
Can you call for the question?
Call for the question.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn? He just stepped out. Motion passes.